Order. We're gonna start with the Pledge of Allegiance. For the Pledge of Allegiance, Farah Han Chima from Discovery Ridge is gonna lead us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, of liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please join us in the mission statement, "Learning Today Leading Tomorrow." Next up, we have rec- recognitions. Daniel?
Alright, um, first up, the WSD is proud to announce Ian Fowler from Timberland High School, who has been selected as a semifinalist in the sixty-eighth Annual National Merit Scholarship Program. Ian has awaited GPA of four point three four and earned a score of thirty-four on his ACT. Ranked fourth in his class, he is a member of FBLA, Link Clu- Link Crew, German Club, and Board Game Club, and serves as Officer of the Programming Club. He attended Missouri Boys State and plans to major in Computer Science at the University of Illinois. Congratulations. Up next, the Liberty High School junior Rafay Chima has earned the highest possible ACT composite score of thirty-six. Nationally, while the actual number of students earning the top score varies from year to year, on average, only around one-half of one percent of students who take the ACT earn a thirty-six. Chima has awaited GPA of four point three-three, is ranked second in his class, and has enrolled in five advanced placement courses this year, as well as two dual-credit college-level courses. Congratulations.
And we also had Grace Warren, who couldn't be here today, and so she also is one of our National Merit semifinalists from Holt High School, so let's give a round of applause for Grace as well. And let's give one more round of applause for the students, their teachers, their families. We know it takes a combined effort to have this kind of educational success. And I definitely, next time we have a trivia night, want all of them on my team, right? Let's give them a round of applause.
Okay, up next is public comment period. Jason?
Thanks, Dan. So, the board, obviously, this part of the session, the board wants to hear from its community. Obviously, we have a number of those in attendance today that wanna speak with the board. Uh, this, this time and opportunity is for board members to hear from patrons of concerns and other issues. Individuals and residents and employees wanting to address the board may do so in accordance with the guidelines that are stuck up there, uh, in following policy four twelve. Uh, what I would ask is that speakers, can you hear me better? No? Speak, ah, better? I almost have to eat this thing. So, we ask that speakers not identify employees by name or students by name, and if, if needing to do so, we ask that you arrange time with the board to speak in closed session about personnel or student matters. Uh, with that said, um, I'd like to turn it over to Dan, but before I do, I think there are a number of speakers that are signed up. Um, we have more than the ten that's allotted per policy. Um, I would ask that my fellow board members extend, uh, the speakers to accommodate all of those that have signed up. That being said, I would make a motion to extend, to allow all speakers here tonight to sign up to speak, uh, under the guidelines set forth in policy four twelve.
I second that motion.
Matthew, before we vote, do you have that motion good? Oh, man. Um, so I just ask, I make a motion to extend public comment period to accommodate all of those that have signed up, and file, and those speakers follow policy four twelve.
Matthew, can we get a roll call?
Vice President Goodson?
Aye.
President Bryce?
Aye.
Director Bates?
Aye.
Director Lizak?
Aye.
Director Stoli?
Aye.
Director Scott?
Aye.
Motion carries.
President Bryce?
Okay, with that, up first, we have Lindy Wiliford.
Um, hello, good evening, members of the board. Um, I am speaking behalf on another parent who couldn't make it tonight because he's working to provide for his five children, four of which attend the Wentzville School District. Um, my son Peyton was assaulted on Wentzville School Campus at the end of October. Security footage was obtained by the district, and video recordings were taken by his attackers, which were later shared with other students. My son suffered two bruised ribs, his phone was destroyed during the attack, and he couldn't walk home due to his injuries. The only reason the attack stopped was because a parent driving by intervened, and the attackers ran away. At no time did my child receive help or protection from the district while being attacked on their premises. After the attack, the school's only concern seemed to be whether or not I would be pressing charges against his attackers. It appeared that was the only thing driving their decision to discipline the students who attacked my son. You even claimed to finish your investigation into the matter that same day, but you didn't take any statements from my son until eleven-six, well after the attacker had already returned to school after his suspension. And when I heard you lifted the attacker's ten-day suspension, I immediately questioned the school and the district. Just two days after this conversation, I was met with a retaliatory letter stating that my children, who are in IEP programs, were being unenrolled on twelve-two due to my failure to provide proof of residency. Why is the school retaliating against me and threatening unenrollment of my children from school when my son was the victim of an assault? I've spoken and confirmed with the Civil Rights Department at DUCI that I have satisfied your residency, residency requirements with my documentation. It took over a dozen calls in contacting DUCI before your Assistant Superintendent of Student Services finally responded to me, and her response was the same boilerplate response that all victims seem to get lately, which is nothing more than a deflection of the real issue. My child continues to get bullied daily by his attackers and their friends, even as far as having used feminine hygiene products put on his desk, hiding his personal items in class, and getting verbal threats like snitches get stitches. The school seems to consistently take the word of the other children over my child, who is the victim. My story is unfortunately not unique. There are dozens behind me. Our children do not feel safe in your schools. Parents have made this abundantly clear, yet it's, it seems to be continually ignored. Why do you let these kids have an open platform to bully without appropriate consequences? You're not just allowing it at this point, but almost encouraging it. This is not how assaults are handled in the real world. Parents, the school district is in the business of protecting the school district, not our children. They have shown this time and time again, I'm almost finished. What will it take for them to take this issue seriously? It just so happens my son's assault took place the same day at the school shooting at BPA in St. Louis. Is the district going to wait for a tragedy like that to finally act? Parents, please file police reports with the appropriate police departments when your child is attacked and pressed charges. Let someone else do an investigation since the district doesn't seem capable or willing. You can also submit a report to the Missouri Highway Patrol with our new Courage to Report program, and several parents have collaborated with the city of Wentzville to provide resources for parents. That can be found at safeschooltaskforce.com. Thanks.
Next up, we have Glenn Becker.
Good evening. This administration has a systemic issue with not following or even enforcing your own policies. This BOE must hold this administration accountable for all the issues in the district is currently facing. This includes the fights, the violence, and the blatant disregard for policies, especially around those concerning data privacy. As you were all made aware earlier, there is certain faculty members taking parent and child information from the computer systems at this school and providing or using it with third parties for solicitation services. This is against school policy. As you are all aware, there are some teachers that are accepting gifts in the forms of free trips, money, and points for other items for providing this information to these third parties. As you are all aware, there are some teachers that are even giving extra credit out to these students if their parents purchase these services from the third parties. You are also aware that this administration disbanded the Data Governance Committee, even though you have policies that require it is its existence. These are examples that clearly violate the policies that you guys have approved within this school. These policies are the fifty-six sixty unauthorized trips, thirty-one seventy accepting free gifts and courtesy from outside, uh, resources. And finally, policy fifty-seven-ten accessing data that is unauthorized by a faculty member. But yet, nobody has done anything. You haven't even notified the parents that are impacted. Final thing I'll say before I give up my time. I keep seeing this hashtag first one-hundred days on, on Facebook. So, hashtag first one-hundred-day checklist. Do your job, hold this administration accountable for the state of this district. Thank you.
Next up, Amy Benninghoffen.
Good evening. Last week, my daughter told me about a book she came across on Epic. It is called Princess Princess Ever After. This book is for ages seven to eleven, Level M. In the book, two princesses get married to each other. My daughter brought it to my attention because she knows it doesn't line up with our personal beliefs. When I spoke to Dr. Tamala about this, she said she would speak with Dr. Skeeters to see if it was possible to put restrictions in place. If not, I could opt my child out. I told her I think that they should go one step further and inform parents that this type of reading material is available on Epic to their children to read. And if they do not want their children to read it, they can opt them out. Parents don't know. There needs to be more transparency. The school district is taking too much freedom in what material and curriculum they are teaching our children. The issue with Epic is the same issue we have with the school libraries, in that we have no way to choose what we feel is appropriate for our children to have access to. If the titles and genres are labeled correctly, we should be able to select the genres or topic we want, and even block genres or topics we don't want our kids to have access to. We wouldn't need this if we could trust what kind of books are being offered. Why is there a push to impose others' worldviews on students versus focusing on the district's tie, the district's tied money and resources on the mission of learning today leading tomorrow? What purpose does this book serve? Is there a measurable outcome? We can be shown that these stories are educational? The answer is no. Parents are responsible for having these conversations about sex and sexuality. These conversations happen on our terms, when we feel our children are ready and mature enough to have them. All I am asking is that schools stay neutral ground. My beliefs and ideology are not allowed to be taught at school. I ask that others' ideologies not be taught at school either. I have said this before, but I will say it again. I never knew what my teachers' beliefs were or what their political, what political party they belong to, so this is attainable. You talk about diversity, equity, and inclusion. What about people of the Christian faith? Oh, right, I forgot, because everything else is acceptable except the Christian faith.
Next up, we have J.J. Suffco.
Hi, my name is J.J. Suffco. I'm a resident of the Wentzville School District. Y'all been pretty busy. In the last month and a half, you spent twenty-two thousand dollar taxpayer dollars to go on Southwest Airlines and American Airlines. I would have the board reference, I know you're getting ready to do a consent agenda tonight, of bills to pay. I have three minutes, so I would ask you to go to P Card Bill List, November twenty-twenty-two, page fifty-nine. There you'll see some items, four hundred and seventy-four dollars and ninety-six cents. We're flying eight people to Vegas with our tax dollars. Four hundred and seventy-four dollars and ninety-six cents. Guess what, school board? I can go on Southwest Airlines right now, today, and I can book it for three hundred and fifty-seven dollars. Why are you guys not taking the cheapest flights? Mr. Angivine, you and I are on the committee with each other. We do not have a corporate travel policy. Corporate travel policies would dictate that you take the least amount, the least amount of fare for your travel, with the exceptions of preference for airlines and also flight times. Every company does that, but you guys are spending the money like it's not yours, 'cause it's not. What drew my attention to this was in October of last month, I looked at your, also your P Card bill, and there's a flight to San Antonio. I fly to San Antonio a lot, but I don't pay almost six hundred dollars for my flights. We paid five hundred and eighty-six dollars and ninety-six cents for travel in February of next year. I can go on Southwest Airlines right now and buy it for three hundred and fifty-five dollars. Why are you not treating these dollars as if it's yours? I looked at your expense report. There's like forty Ubers for three bucks. Please tell me, where do you get that, an Uber for three dollars? Where do you eat at Chipotle for three dollars? Your expense reports do not make any sense. Maybe it does in the government, but I know at our corporation, and I know Mr. Angivine works at a corporation before, these expense reports are jokes. I don't understand what... There's, you guys went to, let's, let's see, let's see, where'd you guys go? Y'all going to Las Vegas, Denver, Philadelphia, San Antonio? Those are all not cheap places to travel to. And the Los Angeles trip is a two-day trip you sent people on. Do better.
Next up, we have Jen Olson.
I'm Jen Olson. This district needs to return the focus to academic excellence, because that's what this district is supposed to do. That's the sole purpose of your existence in society today, academic education. This is true for every district in this country, county, state. Anything outside of academics is not your responsibility, nor is it your place to teach to our children. That being said, it's typically acceptable for schools to play a role in the outlining of moral and ethical standards of our society to our children by way of example, discipline, and reward. However, schools have increasingly overstepped the boundaries over the years. I graduated from Timberland when it was surrounded by nothing but cornfields, all the way to sixty-four. It was one of the best schools in the state at the time, and our district was one of the best in the country. The reason Wentzville was a booming little town today is because everybody flocked here to enroll their children in our district. Back in my day, teachers demanded respect, and there were consequences, and when you stepped out of line or had a foul mouth, children understood the power structure and had, and they respected it for the most part. If you screwed up, your race, gender, nor your GPA had any bearing on your consequence. If you went above and beyond, your race, gender, nor your GPA had any bearing on your reward. Calling someone a cracker, or the N-word, was not only frowned upon by the student body, but it was reacted upon by the student body. We self-policed the halls. We held each other accountable because our teachers and administrators held us accountable. We were doing just fine under the old rules and standards. And then came DUCI with the school improvement plans that have done nothing but destroy our children and our educational institutions. Because the road to hell is paved in good intentions, and this could not be more true for us, than our, than for our society today. When schools took the focus off of academics and placed it on social and emotional learning, and diversity and equity and inclusion, they failed all of our children. The beige ones, the black ones, the brown ones, the tan ones. It failed all of them. Not only did it fail them in all of those areas of focus, but it failed them in their education. As the focus strayed from the academic education over the last two decades, the distant, this district's proficiency levels have plummeted. Just in the past six years, it's gone down almost twenty-five percent. When children do not have effective discipline, are not held accountable for their actions, when they don't have direction, and they are not, and they're being served a subpar education, what kind of behavior do you think will result from that? Anger, disruption, violence, depression, unmotivated, mouthy, disrespectful kids? This district can fix this. All you need to do is stop playing the DUCI-prescribed mind games with our children and restore the academic excellence that this district was once known for. Thank you.
Next up, we have Jenna Roberson.
Hello, y'all. I'd like to address the incident at Liberty High School. I think we've all seen the videos by now, correct? The student was obviously in distress, and no attempt at de-escalation was pursued. Instead, he was told to calm down. Nowhere in the history of time has telling someone to calm down ever worked, and I think we all know that. The student was backed into a corner, and that will one hundred percent of the time lead to fight or flight. They chose flight, which is why I'm here. There was no reason for the administrator to pursue him in that manner, especially if he failed at improving the situation to begin with. I know we ask a lot of our educators, it's been a rough few years, but we cannot blindly support and continue to enable bad behavior. I implore you to reconsider who should have been assigned the suspension in this instance. The student must have this expunged from their record so as not to endanger their future opportunities because this situation was poorly handled by the adult. We will no longer tolerate these sorts of assaults on the children, and we, as a community, can come together to support the district if they do the right thing here. How this proceeds from here is entirely up to you. It's your move. Thank you.
Next up, we have Claudia Jenkins.
Hi. I have four kids in this district. We have been in about five of these schools in this district. I have two children that are on the autism spectrum. One of them is a behavioral issue, or what would be considered a behavioral issue. He was abused and neglected in this district. When he came into this district, well, he's been here since kindergarten, but at nine years old, he was diagnosed with autism, and he was diagnosed with sensory processing disorder and anxiety disorder. When we pulled him out at twelve years old after the abuse, he was diagnosed with PTSD, and he was diagnosed with stress headaches brought on by the school district and how they deal with discipline. He was shoved in a seclusion room for hours on end. He was not taught math. He was handed packets, and that is how he was supposed to learn his math. My child should not have been on medicine at twelve years old, preventative medicine, to keep him from having migraines because of the school district and how they allow some teachers who have doctorates to know more than what higher-ups know, or to know more than what a parent knows. This teacher is still here in this district. When I saw the videos of what happened to that child at Liberty, it completely threw me back into that whole trauma, that whole period of trauma that we had. This is not acceptable. This teacher, this admin, they should not be around students. Our children are getting suspended, and these adults are not being held accountable. Don't tell me that some two-year plan that this teacher gets put on is any sort of punishment or discipline for manhandling. or discipline for manhandling and treating other students this way. We would not allow this in a business. We should not allow this in a school. This affects all of our kids. It affects the kids that see this. It affects the kids that hear about this. It makes kids lose trust in their administration. It makes parents lose trust in the administration and the school board and the staff. Our teachers deserve better than this. Everybody deserves to feel safe. But you know what ends up happening? The teachers who, who report behavior like this get retaliated against. I kept my kids in this district, except for the one who was abused. But I was afraid of being retaliated against for speaking out. I'm not afraid anymore. My son is eighteen. I still have two other kids in this district, and one of them, yes, does have autism, but he's not a behavioral problem. I highly suggest that you take another look at your policies and your procedures for what is acceptable and what is allowed when it comes to adults making the decision, decision on putting their hands on another student who has clearly voiced that they don't want to be touched. He should not be in our school anymore.
Next up, we have Zabrina Looney.
Good evening. I spoke at a board meeting, I believe it was right after my youngest son graduated back in June. I had hoped not to be speaking at a board meeting again. But last Thursday, I was sent a video clip of the incident that happened at Liberty, and I was disturbed. I was more than disturbed. I, I, I had asked at my last board meeting, I explained that during my children's time here at Wentzville School District, the things that they had encountered, and I, my last words was that I hope that the school district does not do anything at mad men, whoever, teachers, to further trauma kids, further cause trauma to children, to further have them have to deal with the things they have to deal with in life. And then, and then I get this. And then I get a video of a kid yelling. This is what I get. A kid that is in distress, that is asking a principal if he think it is funny because the kid was called nigger. And someone laughed, and he said, "It's not funny." Why would he have to tell an adult that this is not funny? Why would he be put in that position? Why would then adults circle around this kid, causing him to feel like he has to fight? Why would then an adult go and put hands and touch this kid? Why? See, if any one of our children got into an altercation in this school district and put hands on another student, they would get equal punishment. That's your rule. You engage, you fight back, if you hit back, you're getting the same punishment. What is going to be done to this principal? How is he going to be held accountable? How is that right? How do parents feel? I have gotten so many inboxes, phone calls about parents saying that they do not feel safe to even come forward and complain because they do not have the money or resources to fight against the things that go on within this district. And so they take it, and they take it, and it causes trauma. This is what's being done to the students who go to school here. This is how parents feel for sending their kids to this school district. And then you have the people who are over them causing this type of trauma. I was always one with my children, I said, "I am in extent, the teachers are me. You have a problem with the teacher, you come to me, you don't ever address the teacher." When I look at this, this is ridiculous. There was no de-escalation, there was nothing. If you want to hold our kids accountable, you hold yourself accountable as well.
Next up, we have Donald Looney.
Good evening. How are you? I wrote some stuff down, so I'm gonna just kind of, you know, get, scrape, sorry, sift through it a little bit, because a whole lot I want to say. And I'm feeling a certain way about a whole lot of things, but I'll start with, you know, back in two thousand twenty-one, when I first made my first run for the Board of Education, it was really about trying to be a strong advocate for educators. Because, like most people, I saw that Wentzville was no longer a farm town. It's no longer a nice little quiet country, exurb, right? It's growing and blossoming, and there are different people here, and everyone's needs were not being met, right? The need for a focus on diversity, equity, and inclusion is long overdue, and it probably could have prevented a lot of the tragedies, a lot of the tragic events, a lot of the news headlines and stories that have now become the benchmark for our once great school district. And I still think it's great. Don't, don't get it confused, I love my city, I love this town, I love this state. But I'm hurt constantly, and you're constantly breaking my heart, right? All that being said, for years, parents have come before to these board meetings, parents get on social media and talk about the way their students are treated in schools, talk about the way that their students are treated on the bus. And the fact of the matter is, is that I've even had to deal with administrators who don't even know how to address my children in an appropriate manner, right? As adults, and when they get frustrated because they don't know how to deal, then they strong-arm, right? And that's unacceptable for me, right? I've been in many a principal office having conversations about that kind of stuff, right? So the need to address diversity, equity, and inclusion is long overdue, and it's not being met. I don't know what standard you have or what policies you're pushing forth, but it's not being met, right? And if it's not, you're gonna lose. You're gonna lose the fight that we're in right now to save public education. You're gonna lose. This community is gonna lose. If you keep electing board members, if you keep supporting politicians and sending them to our state legislature who tell you openly and blatantly that they don't support public education, right? Not all of us have the option to send our kids to private schools. So we don't, we don't want government subsidies so we can afford that, right? What I want you to do is I want you to equip the teachers, the staff, and the administrators with the education, the knowledge, the tools, and the skills to deal with all of our students from everywhere, every single day, in a much more effective manner, because you're missing the mark. And if you continue to do that, you will lose the fight for public education. People won't be racing to live in Wentzville, because our school district won't be as hallowed as it was once before. Give me about five more seconds, please. So I'm asking you to take a long look at your policies and procedures, because they are archaic at best, antiquated at worst, and it needs to change, all right? We gotta get past this place to where we're so worried about being called a racist, bigot, a xenophobe, or whatever. It's almost like we're more worried about defending that position of saying what we're not than taking a look at what we are and where we are and doing something about it. I'm done. Thank you for your time.
Next up, we have Demesha Stewart.
Hello, my name is Demesha, and my son attends Prairie View Elementary School. In second grade, he was on the school bus, been bullied by a sixth grader. He was kicked in the face, and his friend was kicked in the neck. The sixth grader punishment was suspension off the bus for the remainder of the school year. If my son was bullying or decided to kick a student in the face as a black student with straight A's and no prior behaviors or concerns, those consequences would have been different, maybe jail or expelled. On Monday, November fourteenth, twenty twenty-two, at three thirty PM, I received a phone call from his school stating that he was almost stabbed by a student on his bus. Mind you, school started at ten thirty. I'm very glad that I was contacted once school was out. I've spoken with the bus driver, his boss, Kim Byaks, the director, one of your board members, Janelle, and of course, his principal. His principal was the only one who showed hard compassion towards me and my son. Janelle, who's in leadership, was very defensive and offended when I asked her one simple question. The question was, "What is Wentzville planning to keep all students safe?" Instead of being defensive, she should have, she should have shown more empathy, compassion, or handed the call to another board member whose heart is full, who, whose heart is for all students and kids, no matter what race, gender, or religion they come from. I would love to see more action and less talking with rules and regulations. That's not being applied equally. To the bus drivers, you're not Uber drivers. Our kids' lives matter. Once you pick them up, their lives are in your hands, which means we trust you to do the right thing, and that's to keep them safe. To the board members, the day you all counseled Jesus out of the schools is the same day school shootings and outrage has began. Bring Jesus back into the schools. Give us parents some hope and security that our children are safe in your hands. I have two scriptures. It says, "Trust in the Lord with all your heart and lean not on your own understanding." That's Proverbs three, chapter five. I have another one. "Do not conform to the pattern of this world, but be transformed by the renewing of your mind. Then you will be able to test and approve what God's will is, His goodwill pleasing and perfect will." That's Romans twelve, two. I also created these packets with your policies. I underlined some things that I felt that you all need to read over again and start applying. I also had screenshotted some things I saw on Facebook with different races of parents that also, the, the kids were bullied in your school district. One lady said, "My son has been bullied on that bus since starting this year." Here is one of the pictures I took. He was slapped by one of those kids on the bus. On this picture, it shows a handprint of how hard the young lady slapped them.
Ma'am, can you come to a conclusion, please?
My conclusion is, y'all need to do something about y'all policies, and we need some, um, we need y'all to start stepping up to the plate for these kids that's getting bullied.
Next up, we have Kylan Stout.
Hi, I'm Kylan. If I could please have your full attention, the last time I spoke to you all, I did not have that respect. I'm only nine years old, and I'm brave enough to speak to you all. I hope you care enough to listen. When I was in second grade, a sixth grader went crazy on my bus and stomped on my neck three times. I thought I was going to die and never make it home to my mom and dad and brother. I've been bullied so many times and called names that hurt me. My heart hurt, and I started to not like school anymore, because it can be scary. My grades went down until I got my favorite teacher last year, Ms. Spearman. You might want to give her a raise. She was the best. She helped me like school again. Then Monday, that fear came back when a girl tried to stab my friend next to me on the bus with scissors. She wasn't playing, because people don't play with scissors. That's dangerous. School is scary. I hate going. I want to stay home where I feel safe. If you have kids, wouldn't you want them to be safe and love school? Please make school better for me and my friends. I want to love school. P.S., can you make the corn dogs better? It tastes weird, but the chicken sandwich is good. Thank you for letting me talk. I hope you listen with your hearts tonight.
Okay, with that, that ends public comment. Next up, we have superintendent comments.
Good evening. Can you guys hear me out there? That's good, isn't it? It's a good, okay, great, thank you. So Bren's gonna bring up our presentation, and we're just gonna run through some of the happenings that have been in the district over the last month since we've been together. And so today is my, my one-hundredth business day in the district, and all of the, um, the different opportunities that we've had at the different schools that have been so much fun to get to know the students and the staff and the community. We have officially wrapped all of those up. So we'll share with you some of the highlights from the last month and give some updates as well. So if you haven't started following us on Twitter, we do post nearly every day, multiple times, so you can kind of see a glimpse into what's happening in the district in real time. And so with November, there's so much to be grateful and thankful for. And so November this week actually is American Education Week, and we are so thankful for all of our dedicated staff members, our teachers, our support staff, our administrators. Wednesday, yesterday, was Educational Support Professionals Day. So all of our staff who are working in support capacities to help make sure students learn and are safe at school. Last week also was National School Psychology Week, and on November eighth, we celebrated National Parents as Teachers Week as well. Yesterday, we were excited to be able to announce that Jenny Teese, kindergarten teacher from Stone Creek Elementary, has been recognized as the Emerson twenty twenty-two Excellence in Teaching, and she is an award recipient for that. So she's very deserving, and we're very excited for her. We also are excited to announce that Courtney Hidorn from North Point Middle, she was named the Mo Shape St. Louis District PE Teacher of the Year. And so she was just recognized at their annual conference. And Molly Bradshaw is an instructional assistant in, at Dwellow Elementary, and she has been nominated by her peers for recognition as well. She does an amazing job at Dwellow, meeting the needs of the students and bringing joy to that school. So tonight, you did meet Rafael Chima, and you also met Ian Fowler. Rafael scored the perfect score on the ACT, thirty-six. That doesn't happen very often, so that's a high, high achievement. And then Ian Fowler and Grace Warren also were recognized as national merit semifinalists. We also want to recognize Tyler Classy from North Point High School. He was recognized at the Wentzville Rotary Club this week as their Student Spotlight of the Month. This month, I also was able to begin some of my Student Advisory Council roundtables with students. Last month, I was able to meet with, um, uh, students at, uh, sorry, uh, Timberland High School. And then this month, I was able to meet with North Point and Liberty. Next month, I'll meet with Holt and Pierce Hall as well. I have been continually impressed by our students. They are really amazing, thoughtful, insightful, young people. They are very in tune with what is happening in their schools, what the strengths are, areas that they can help improve, and they are, they feel empowered to help make those changes. And so I'm excited about the meetings that I've had with them and what we plan to be able to cover in our future meetings as well. And so learning walks continue. I'm in schools nearly every day, walking through. And this month, we've really started focusing on getting into some of the elective classes and getting into some of the special classes. Kids are doing so many fun things, from pottery to making, cutting boards in their industrial tech classes. They're doing lots of fun things. The choirs and the bands and the theater groups are, are really doing well as well. And then this month as well, we started with Timberland High School. They had a pink out, and it was on the Fox Two News pep zone. We also had trunk or treats at many of our schools as well, lots of great times there. I've been lucky to get into classrooms and even serve snack. Our middle schools have started their intramural programs, and so that's very fun for them as well, beginning to build that school spirit. Walmart was very gracious, and they granted twenty-five hundred dollars to the Walmart was very gracious and they granted twenty-five hundred dollars to the district to help support um, our students in need, and they also donated five hundred dollars to the North Point Band Boosters as well. And then just recently, we had the Missouri School Board Association Annual Conference. And many of our school board members were able to attend, focusing, um, on sessions around governance and strategic planning, district operations, school safety. A lot of great, um, sessions and information was gathered at that conference as well. For our parents, um, we started, uh, having some parent meetings, and we had our first one on November eighth on substance abuse, and it's pretty much everything parents need to know. We had quite a few, uh, outside vendors and resources, great informational sessions. And we plan on sending out some information or gathering some information from our parents to see what other kinds of informational sessions parents would be interested in, um, learning more about in the coming months and for next year as well. Last week, we had Veterans Day celebrations in nearly every single, in fact, I think all of our schools across the district. Hundreds and hundreds of veterans were honored and joined us, and it was such a joyous celebration day. Um, I know most of our cabinet, most of the board members were able to get into many of our schools and, um, celebrate alongside our, our community. That was really one of the first events that has, um, really brought our community back together, and so that was an amazing, amazing day. This past Saturday, uh, Winsfield Fire Protection District and along with the Saint, or, um, the Winsfield School District provided Operation Warmth. They gave out two hundred and fifty brand new coats to students who need them. Students were able to come and shop and pick out the coat that they loved, make sure that it fit. Um, we watched students come in, um, excited and leave just thrilled, smiling. Parents were so thankful, and it was just an amazing opportunity to really be a part of the Winsfield community and feel the connection and love that, um, is given out. One of the items that, uh, the board will vote on today, uh, during the board meeting is authorizing a new Care to Learn chapter for the Winsfield School District. And Care to Learn is a nonprofit organization that provides the structure for us to raise funds to help support health, hunger, and hygiene issues that students may have as barriers to their learning. And so we are excited that if that is approved, that we will be able to further expand the great resources, like what I just talked about, the Operation Warmth. To be able to further expand those resources to really meet the needs of our students and the families so that they can, they can really focus on learning when they come to school. Then we also are in the process of meeting with all of our municipalities to discuss future growth and development. We've already had our meetings with the City of Winsfield, Lake St. Louis, and Darden Prairie. We have our meeting with O'Fallon scheduled, and Forestelle has sent us information and we're working through that with them. We are compiling all of the information on the new, um, the new subdivisions and developments that are coming our way, calculating, um, how many students potentially may be coming to us in future years. Also today on the board agenda, we also are asking for board approval on a demographic study so that we can have good information to begin making long-term plans for the district in terms of growth and capacity. Um, where we are with our current capacity at our schools, how many students can we continue to absorb before we have to have conversations around boundaries or potential additional add- additions to schools or additional schools for the district as well. So that work, um, is, is l- long work. Um, but it's also going to set us up for making good decisions in the future. What goes along with that are the facility walks that we've been, we've been conducting too. So, um, our Rick Angiovine, our CFO, John Blanton, our d- executive director of facilities, um, uh, Dwayne Kinson, our, uh, director of maintenance, um, Diana, our director of custodial, myself, and our school principals are all walking our facilities together, and we're talking about HVAC replacements and the roofs on the schools, and we're checking out all of the spaces that need attention. Um, some are cosmetics, some are, uh, more serious, that need a little more, um, uh, attention more quickly. We also have our legacy schools that, uh, need some love. And so we're about halfway through. We've been able to visit fourteen of our facilities, and we're about that halfway mark. So between now and the beginning of January, we'll finish up those visits to really co- start compiling five-year long-range plans for, um, some of those maintenance items, some of the items that we would need that are more significant. And then, uh, begin to, um, put plans together for future re- renovation, remodeling, construction, and all of those things. So I do want to take a moment and just talk a little bit about just a school safety update. Um, as area schools continue to process the tragic situation that occurred earlier this month that in the St. Louis Public School District, I do want to take a moment to discuss school safety. Um, some of the added areas for school safety this year that were new this year, they include school and transportation emergency crisis plans. We reviewed those with all of our administrators and our first responder groups and our school leaders. We also brought our first responder groups back with our district uh, administrators and reviewed and revised our emergency crisis plans at the district level and have actually submitted those to St. Charles County Emergency Operations Center for further uh, feedback so that we can make sure that they are as up-to-date as possible. We have been able to add additional school resource officers this year, and we also anticipate increasing the resource officer uh, FTE at Frontier starting in January. Um, this year as well, we have the Behavioral Risk Assessment Training that we had for all of our school crisis teams. And we've increased our partnership with our local fire police and first responder groups and have set up ongoing collaboration and communication, making sure that we are really keeping each other involved around topics on school safety, response during emergency situations, things like that. Currently in the district and as part of Prop S, we are in the process of updating all of our exterior door management and locking systems, um, which will allow us to have greater control and awareness when doors are left open. Um, and also to know exactly who is coming and going from all of our schools. And we also this semester have made revisions to our bus discipline protocol and processes to address misbehavior on the bus as well. We continue to have our active shooter training, including scenarios for all staff members in the district multiple times a year. We also have our camera and buzzer entry and check-in process, which we are tightening that up. So please, as you are visiting your children's school and they're asking information at the front door before they're letting in, please let, please know that that is in response to our request to tighten up that process. With the Raptor Visitor Management System and visitor badges, that also, um, is being tightened up. Our staff IDs, um, they're wearing their badges every day so that we can quickly identify who should or shouldn't be in our schools as well. And then we do have monitoring of our computer usage on all of our school devices when they're on, um, the district net- network. And we will, administrators receive notices, um, when anything that is flagged as self-harm or other dangerous behaviors um, pop up, and our, our school and resource officers are immediately notified. Our School Safety and Security Committee is gearing back up to start for future enhancements and upgrades for additional security measures. And with that, I do just want to say again, and I know this, people say this a lot, but it's so true. If you see something or you hear something, please say something. Um, immediately address any safety concerns you have with the school, school principal. And if it is after hours, we do have our WSD app that has a tip line for reporting of concerning behaviors and situations, and there's also the courage to report for reporting of concerning behaviors and situations, and you can find that on the district website, the Missouri State Highway Patrol website, or the DESI website. With social media, I need your help. Since the start of the school year, I've addressed multiple situations that individuals have put on social media regarding safety or school discipline issues that weren't initially reported to the schools. These concerns often come to me by second or third hand, and social media cannot be the first stop to report the issues or concerns. We need parents to immediately take safety concerns directly to the school principal. If you see posts on social media, please ask if they've directly reported the c- concern to school administration for investigation. We can't investigate concerns that we don't know about. All concerns that are reported to the district are taken seriously and will be re- investigated and addressed appropriately. Also, when we, when we see things on social media, please know that there are always two sides to a story. And what's shared on social media may be limited and not show the full picture or context. We are addressing all safety, school safety concerns. We're applying discipline policy fairly to students. The district is focusing on keeping students and staff safe, and our administrators take school safety seriously. But even with a tight focus on safety, some things may happen that are out of our control. Situations are investigated from all perspectives. And due to confidentiality laws that protect our students and our staff, the district isn't often able to share much information, which I know is very frustrating to some. Please know that when you're seeing something on social media or hearing things, um, around that you, that it may not contain the full picture. Technology Security Assessment. The district is focused on the importance of cybersecurity and our cybersecurity posture. The district has completed multiple technology assessments from three external organizations and are pleased that we are faring well. We continually evaluate our security protocols to keep data integrity safe. With transportation, last month, I really talked a lot about where we were with staffing, and I kind of put a plea out to please help us. That plea is still there. But I am glad to report that since last month, we now have eight new drivers in the pipeline for hiring. We have two new drivers that have trans- transitioned from driving outside the district routes to inside the district routes. And six more drivers will transition from outside the district routes to inside the district in coming weeks. Additional subs and bus aides have also been hired. Please know, of those new drivers, the eight that are in the pipeline, the training process is fairly lengthy, so we should start to feel some relief. Hopefully after the start of the new year, when they're able to start driving routes. We are currently hiring for a bus driver trainer position, and we do have driver, aide, and sub pitch- sub positions still available to fill. And so with the last thing, oh, not the last thing, almost the last thing. Um, with our, um, other job areas, we still have a lot of p- open positions. We do have a hiring incentive for individuals who, um, start working with us in this district. Thou- up to a thousand dollars. Um, and so we have transportation positions, custodians, instructional assistants, child nutrition, before and after school care, substitutes. So if you know anyone who's interested in working in the district, please send them our way. If they need creative work schedules, we can most likely work with them on that. And if they're even just looking for a few hours a day, um, we can, we can help in those regards as well. I do want to note that, um, later on the agenda, the board will be asked to approve a resolution for the April election. We do have three board seats that are available. So if you are interested in potentially becoming a board candidate, you are welcome to join us on November twenty ni- twenty-ninth from six to eight P.M. at Berry Place Center. That's the old admin center right in front of, uh, Winsfield Middle. And we will go through the filing process, make sure you have all the paperwork. We'll talk with you about, um, the different board policies that we have and answer any questions you might have. This Friday, we are excited that Timberland Football will, um, be going to quarterfinals against Francis Howell High School at seven P.M. at Timberland, so we are going to all cheer on our Wolves. If you do plan on attending, please note that no tickets will be, uh, sold on site. You have to go through the Misha website if you plan to attend. And the last thing we want to say is we want to wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving, and just note that the district will be closed for Thanksgiving break, November twenty-third to the twenty-fifth.
President Bryce, may I ask a question? Dr. Tamora, just real quick, on student safety, I think there was a, there was, um, an email you sent or responded to some. Could you speak just quickly to, I think you were gonna look at, um, as we think about discipline and things and, and now your time here in the first several months of students in the buildings, looking at our student handbook Code of Conduct. Kind of just talk a little bit about that timeline process for reviewing that, maybe when the board sees that.
Sure. So one of the things, um, that I do as superintendent is any long-term suspension beyond ten days, sup- uh, principals can suspend up to ten days, any be- anything beyond that comes to my office after going through the, the discipline hearing. And so I am seeing firsthand every single long-term suspension that's coming through the district. And I have asked our staff to, um, start looking at our code of conduct and that we are, over this next semester, we are planning on going through that process. And right now in the district, we have just a code of conduct that has some fairly generalized, um, uh, parameters, and so we're gonna look at creating grade span-specific codes of conduct so that administrators, parents, students can all be aware of what certain, um, offenses may, what they could expect, but we're also going to focus on the proactive strategies before the discipline. So we're gonna look at the interventions, the other practices that we will have in the district or in the school um, before we get to some of those more, um, punitive consequences. And so we anticipate that that'll happen over the second semester, um, so that we can have those ready for the board and to get them into the annual parent notifications that will go out this summer.
Thanks.
There any more comments? Okay, thank you, Danielle. Next up, we have consent agenda. We need a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Motion.
Amended.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay, ayes have it. Next up, we need a motion to approve the fiscal year two thousand twenty-two audit report as presented.
So moved. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Discussion?
So I will turn this over to Rick Angiovine, our CFO, to introduce, um, our auditors who are here to present some of their report findings.
Thank you. Uh, it is required by DESI and, uh, state law that this board, uh, approve the audit. Uh, the audit is required to be a, by a third-party independent auditor. Uh, after this, uh, presentation by the auditor, uh, this board will be asked to make a motion to approve this audit. Uh, here tonight, we have Susan Dawson, our Director of Accounting and Finance. Uh, Susan is here to ask any specific accounting questions that you have regarding our financials. The presentation from our third-party independent auditor is Jennifer Heim, partner at FIC, Agamire and Williamson CPAs. Uh, Jennifer, if you could make your presentation, please.
There we go. Okay. Um, I'm assuming you all have seen it, so I'm just gonna do a general rundown of it, and I can answer any specific questions you have. Um, so, starting on page four of the PDF, it's page one of the audit, but it's page four within the PDF, is your Independent Auditor's Report. You have an unmodified opinion. That's what you want. It's a clean opinion. We didn't find any reason to change um, our overall opinion. You will notice, if you've seen the financials before, it's a new format. It's now three pages instead of two pages. Um, page eight of the PDF is your Statement of Net Position. This shows all your funds together. Um, overall cash is a hundred and sixty-one million. This is a decrease from last year due to bond spending. Uh, page nine, your Statement of Activities. It does show that the district has an overall loss of twenty-five million versus a profit of forty-eight million from the prior year. Again, this is bond issuance related. Uh, page ten shows the balance sheet by fund. General fund cash is up three point three million. Page twelve's the income statement by fund. It kind of gives you a breakdown as to that cha- that overall change of cash for the year. Page fourteen is the start of the notes. These are all pretty standard verbiage. Page fourteen is the start of the notes, these are all pretty standard verbiage. Um, on page eighteen, you will see that all of the district's cash is secured as required. Page seven, or twenty-one, excuse me, shows all the bond activity, as well as leases and notes payable. Page twenty-five starts the budget, you'll see that the general fund performed thirteen million dollars better than originally predicted. Um, revenue was up eight million and you spent less, or five million less than what was originally projected. Page thirty is the details of the federal expenditures, the major program this year was the child nutrition. Um, again, clean opinion as far as the single audit is concerned. Page forty is the report on internal controls, and page forty-two is the report on the single audits. We had no findings within the, the internal controls nor with compliance. And that's pretty much the general overview.
Questions from the board?
Okay, hearing, no questions. We have a, you're good, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it. Next up, we need a motion to approve the two thousand twenty-one, two thousand twenty-two professional learning program evaluation as presented.
And so I will turn this over.
Let's hear the motion.
Motion.
Julie, got a motion?
Second.
Okay, discussion?
I get all excited when we talk about professional development, I wanted to jump right in. So I am going to turn this over to Dr. Carrie Skeeters, our Assistant Superintendent for Teaching and Learning, and Priscilla Frost is also here um uh with her as well to present.
So just, I want to introduce Priscilla again, just because um I want to share with the board that the responsibility of managing professional development falls under um our Directors of Elementary and Director of Secondary Learning. Um, Priscilla's our Director of Secondary Learning. Uh, Erin Frost is, or Erin Gaby, Priscilla Frost, Erin Gaby is our Director of Elementary, she was unable to be here tonight. So, uh, Priscilla is presenting on behalf of all of us, so, take it away.
Thank you. So we'll go through um what our goals were for the twenty-one, twenty-two school year and what our goals are moving forward for twenty-two, twenty-three. I'm doing it, I just figured that out, okay. So I wanted to create some learning targets for the board tonight to kind of model what we expect our teachers to be doing in the classroom and what we do for our teachers when we're providing professional learning for them. So this board report, there's three learning targets tonight. One is that you can articulate the twenty-one, twenty-two professional learning goals and outcomes, that you can synthesize the need for a centralized data collection system for professional learning, and you can identify the professional learning goals for the twenty-two, twenty-three school year. So the goals for the twenty-one, twenty-two school year, um, we created these last year, they're not, you'll notice, metric-based. And uh we'll go through those, so continue to provide focused professional learning that aligns with the Wentzville School District CSIP and the current needs of the district educators. Research professional, personalized learning and investigate personalized learning opportunities for WSD students. Continue to explore and make use of alternative methods for engaging in professional learning. Identify critical data to measure the effectiveness of district professional learning opportunities and investigate opportunities to expand professional learning for administrators. What we found was that um we didn't have a lot of um ways in which to gather data on how effective our professional learning was. And so these goals led us to really doing a lot of research during the twenty-one, twenty-two school year to look at, which helped us to establish our goals for this year. So looking at all the areas of professional learning through that research, how we collect data, how we um support our new teachers, and how we provide professional learning to our administrators and our teachers in, in the district. So we focused on three areas, like I just said, new teacher mentor program, professional learning data collection and personalized learning opportunities, and how we could, by doing that, we looked at um we did research across, from different districts across the United States with Learning Forward, A S C D, and so really tried to dig into what best practices were in these areas so that we could um look at what our practices were and how we could adjust those moving forward in the future. I'm gonna talk about each of these in the um following slides. So the new teacher mentor program, we specifically looked at, looking at a three-tiered system approach and how we can focus on teacher retention and capacity building in our teachers, and really looking at personal development of teachers. Um, we thought that's an area that sometimes education is overlooked, right? In the business world, there's a lot of personal development of teachers happening. And in the education world, that doesn't happen all the time. So we want to make sure that teachers come into Wentzville School District feeling um welcomed and supported, and that we're looking at not just their learning, the teaching in the classroom, but also their social emotional needs as well and how we can support them and being the best they can be. Um, so we researched programs across the United States, and we came up with a three-pronged approach as we moved into this school year, that we are um piloting and using right now, um that focuses on our mentorship program, focuses on our coaches and our content leads, and also coaches on the lead team, which is myself and Erin Gaby. And so um we have intentional support happening at all those levels, both personal and instructional, so that we can help to support new teachers in all areas of their learning. Um, and that's happening through coaching, through um meetings that we have with them, and through a revamp of our mentor program, which we now call our um teacher talent mentor program. And so teacher, those mentors are much more connected to those new teachers on a um more regular basis. They're at meetings with them, they're learning the same content, and they're helping to come alongside them in that support. Then we also looked at our professional learning data collection program. Um, in the past, this is a snippet of what we would have been able to show you with data with professional learning. Basically, what events we were having and how many people attended those events, right? Did a Google form to gather some feedback, anecdotal feedback from people on those events, but really no way to really um gather trend data from that for us to see what we need to do moving forward. So we did a lot of research, research around how we could um better collect data on the effectiveness of our professional learning programs in the district. We landed on, as you know, Kickup. So now after Kickup, this is the type of data, snippet of the type of data that we can now get. This is a bird's eye view, forty thousand foot view of the data, that looks at, this is a, a snippet from, oh, a couple weeks ago, that shows, this is our overall data for the whole district, all learning opportunities we've offered, all the feedback we've had. This is the feedback we're getting from that. So we can get this big view of how people are looking at professional learning in the district. And then we can also get this drilled-in view of how teachers are responding to professional learning in district by grade, by building, by event, and by learning experience. So we can really take those elements that we expect um to have during effective professional learning and really drill on how effective our practices are and how we can adjust things moving forward. Um, we look at every event um feedback, every curriculum meeting we're having, every um professional learning day for the district, every after-school professional learning event that we're hosting, every book study we're doing, and we're looking at the data after every meeting and making adjustments then for the next time we're doing that learning, or something like that. And we're not just saying we're doing that, we're spending lots of hours in team meetings and in one-on-one meetings, really drilling in and looking at what we need to be um, um, learning for, for the district. And so, we want to make sure that what we're giving in the district and what the professional learning we're providing is really being intentionally designed to um create the best learning experiences for our teachers. And then, this is an example of the kind of open response feedback we can also gather from Kickup. And so it tells us, for example, in this one, six people requested coaching. I would like to have a coaching cycle with a content leader or coach to come into my classroom about this content so I can learn more. So we can really drill down very specifically on those teachers' needs, and they do follow-up and go back in the system in the classroom with that. So that's, so this is just a little snippet of what we're gonna be able to show you as we move forward into next year and next year's report. Um, we're really able also through Kickup to triangulate that data, so we can look at how our professional learning program is going, how our mentoring program is going, and then how our coaching cycles are going, so that we can then take all of that together to create a big picture of professional learning for districts, for teachers in the district. One area, um, our coaching, literacy coaches, math coaches, we've not been able to really um drill in and pull good data about how effective those coaching, coaches are in the buildings, how effective those coaching cycles are. This gives us a way to track it systematically across the district and really look at how that data and how, what we're affecting in the classroom, specifically like what the content of those coaching cycles are, and then how effective that was from student data collection throughout that cycle. So, the third area we looked at was personalized learning opportunities for teachers. And so as a result of our research, we implemented the following personalized learning opportunities this school year for teachers. I'm a huge believer that when you give people choice and how they learn, that they're gonna learn more and be more engaged. And so, the more that we can do that, the better off we are for teachers. That's what we want to happen in the classrooms for our students, so we should be modeling that for our administrators and our teachers. And so, on our district professional learning day, specifically secondary content, almost every content area has choice learning strands, where teachers signed up ahead of time for this is the area that I want to learn in. And then we have facilitators for those learning events for them. And they're learning about those topics throughout the school year and building on that knowledge base, and then sharing out with other educators. Um, we put into play something called We Learn Wednesdays. Um, we're trying to do those, I think there's twenty-seven of those this school year, where teachers can just on the fly sign up and pick up to come for a session. It's an hour or two after school, they can learn a skill, and they can pick or choose whatever ones they want to attend. Um, for secondary administrators, last summer, we did choice learning, so we had three different things that secondary administrators could choose to come to and learn from. And then elementary has very specific student-centered coaching professional learning sports happening this school year too. As we move into the twenty-two, twenty-three school year, we're really gonna be able to use Kickup as our base for tracking how effective our professional learning is. So we'll establish a baseline measurement for relevant learning experiences, a baseline measurement for engaging learning experiences. We'll establish a baseline measurement for learning experience that meet learners' needs, and also for learning experiences impact on educator practice. All those four things are things that we're able to very specifically track using our Kickup data from our different professional learning events that we're providing throughout the district. So we'll be able to have very specific data on that. Thank you.
Do we have any discussion?
President Bryce, if I may?
Yes.
Um, Dr. Skeeters or Ms. Frost, I'm not sure who to direct this to, but thank you for the presentation, obviously it was, it's comprehensive. I was just wondering, when you're talking about the baseline um measurements, I guess when can we expect to see that? When can the board expect to see some of those?
So, we anticipate providing that next year in our report. So right now, she showed you sort of a snapshot, like we're getting that data now. Um, this is a new tool to us, so the, the baseline measurement is really important because uh our, our teachers are not accustomed to filling something out every single time they engage in professional learning with us. And so we're really encouraging them, and we're, we're trying to help them see that this is like the assessment at the end of a lesson. Um, it gives us the feedback, so we know where to go next with learning, or we know how to adjust our teaching. Um, so we're really working on um improving the response rate in the evaluations themselves. Uh, so, at the end of the year, we expect to have good data on professional learning for the year as a whole. Um, and hopefully what we'll see is, as we move through the year, teachers will find that we are being responsive to the feedback that they're giving. Um, and then, so then they'll feel more empowered and comfortable to provide that feedback. But um as a whole, uh, we plan on providing that in next year's report um on professional learning.
Thanks, and just, just one more question. Um, with the new mentoring program, are, is Kickup able to gather feedback with that as well?
Yeah, so, we're tracking um feedback for the mentor program, professional learning events, and for coaching cycles. And so for the mentor program, we actually built out the cycle all in Kickup. So that way, everything that the teachers have, just because there's very specific guidelines from D E C on what teachers need to do during that first and second year. So all the assignments they're doing, observations they're doing, coaching cycles, feedback is all tracked in there. So all the data's in one place, all the assignments are submitted in one place. So we're really able to look at that data specifically in Kickup, yes. And then we could connect that to a coaching cycle, because we're having them do coaching cycles, so we can see, okay, this teacher is a first-year teacher, she did a coaching cycle in this area, how is that helping to support them in the classroom? So, there's a, it's a triangulation of data, I like to say that word, Carrie Skeeters thinks it's funny, so.
President Bryce, bye. Um, so, so recognize that we will get the baseline data of this board next year, but I assume interactively through the year, you're going to get some level of feedback, how it's going. Talk to us a little bit about how adaptive you will be with that data live throughout the school year. So recognizing it like, you know, for the board, obviously, we see it on this annual basis, but how will you, from a teaching and learning perspective, adapt through the year, taking a lesson learned, say, from first half to second half of the school year?
So I'm gonna let Priscilla talk about this a little bit more, but what I will say is, already, as she, she kind of mentioned before, that after every single event, we're looking, so um just last night, I pretty sure it was last night, I uh, I, I, I had the distinct honor of um facilitating the uh second-year teacher um learning on Tuesday night. And I was eager to see how they felt about that learning, so I went in and took a look at their feedback. And we had a conversation today about, you know, what kind of adjustments can we make based on what we're feeling and hearing and seeing? Um, so, every single event, we're looking at that, at that feedback and determining, and it's really important because they are leaving feedback like, I could use this, this to help me next. And so if we're not looking at that, then we're not going in and helping. Um, but in addition, they're using, uh, we are using it, content leaders, coaches are using it to adjust on the fly. And um, Priscilla probably knows a little bit more about that, because she's working directly with the coaches and the content leaders uh on that. Um, so I'll let her talk to that a little bit more.
So I'd say on a large level, the district um Professional Development Committee, each time they meet, they're pulling data from the last district day and looking at it as a per-building level and as a whole. So we taught them how to do that at our last meeting, because the first one was September. We'll do that again at the next meeting at, from the November first big days. And then a smaller scale, as a teaching and learning team, after every curriculum meeting, so we have meetings every couple weeks as a team, we're, I'm having them pull their last PD data, and we're looking at what are some big takeaways from that? What are we sharing, what are we learning? And then we're also looking at curriculum meeting data and looking how those are going as well. So, we're being very strategic about looking at that data moving forward, and like Dr. Skeeter said, after new teacher meetings, we're looking at that um after every meeting and looking how we can adjust for the next one. Coaching is a place where we are starting to look at data from that, it's a complete shift in mindset to be tracking it. And so, we have not started looking at the coaching data yet, but that will be a second semester goal to start looking at that data. Because coaching cycles are just getting going and really working well right now at this point in the year, so, does that answer your question? Okay.
Any more discussion? Okay, with that, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it. Okay, next up, we have the second reading of the policies. Are there any questions or discussions?
President Bryce, if I may?
Yep.
Um, I just kind of wanted to hone in on policy sixty-two fifteen, it's the reading success policy. Um, this is obviously coming our direction because of a new statute that was passed. I, I just wanted to kind of focus on it, you know, academic achievement is one of our goals. And I'm just curious, um, Dr. Skeeters, could you speak to what the district has been doing, is doing, and then once this new law kicks in at the beginning of the year, what we're adding to our bucket to kind of help students who are struggling in reading?
Sure. Brit, there's a slide that I sent you, could you put that up for me? So, uh, we of course were uh watching um legislation all throughout the year last year because reading um and literacy was a common theme, and we were watching to see where it would land. Um, and so it, it did end up um as part of the omnibus bill. Um, so, we are going to continue with our current assessment practices. We have a variety of assessments that, that um look at students reading as, as comprehension, of course, fluency, of course, but also it digs into phonics, phonemic awareness, phonological awareness, um, all critical components of learning to read. Um, and those are uh items that are addressed through this bill. Uh, we will continue our focus on intentional small group instruction. Um, that is something that, you know, was sort of waylaid when um we encountered the pandemic because we were reluctant to bring students close together in small groups to, to learn. And so we were being very careful about how we did that. Um, and now what we're doing is we're returning to our, our best practice of ensuring we're pulling small groups, but not just pulling students into a small group to do learning, but using our assessment data to determine what skills it is that students need, and strategically designing small groups to address any um needs and skills, and teaching into those in small groups. And when we've shored up that skill, then we um, we move things on, move students on, and regroup and um address additional needs as we move forward. Um, we've been, we've actually just spent some time last week with our uh elementary administrators, uh, getting them a little bit more familiar with our I-ready, I-ready data and how that can help our teachers to really intentionally look at student data and intentionally form small groups. It also provides resources when um instructing students in those small groups. Uh, this year, we have started, uh, at the beginning of the year, we started with uh professional learning that will happen throughout the year, so it's ongoing professional learning for all K-five classroom teachers in the area of structured literacy. Um, so really pulling in that science of reading approach, um, and pulling in that science of reading approach, um and really uh teaching into, again, learning to read skills that are not always skills that um the teachers at intermediate grade levels are learning in the um, in their undergrad programs or in their teacher development programs, um so we're shoring up skills for them, and they are definitely appreciative of that, and then they're able to take that information back to their small group instruction and apply it in the classroom directly after these dates, so that's working um well, and that's, those, those sessions are going well. Um in addition, we are training um a variety of instructional staff in letters, uh which is another structured literacy um training program. We've had, and reading interventionists in the past go through that training, and as many of you know, um D E S I has been providing scholarships for teachers, this is a very expensive training, so providing scholarships for teachers um and instructional staff to participate, so our literacy coaches who work directly with teachers and helping support their instruction, our reading interventionists and several classroom teachers have been participating in this. Uh so that is what we have going on currently, um we are continuing to wait uh on additional guidance from um the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education regarding uh what assessments are approved for use and uh what um curricular resources um are appropriate or approved for use, we have not received that information yet, so as we move through the rest of the year, as we receive more information, we will be looking to um evaluate our, our current process and practices and programming and make adjustments as needed.
Thanks, and just one more question, I, I noticed it also says that we have to, well, there may be an update required to our C S I P, is that something that we're looking to do as well, and are we ready for that?
Yes, so I think bec- because we already have a goal focused on academic achievement as a um, as a focus area within our goal number one in our C S I P, adding this as an action step makes uh very good sense there, and then of course, as we continue to revise the C S I P going forward, we will intentionally include that.
Is there any more discussion? Okay, next up, we have new business. Next up, we have new business, we need a motion to approve the Board of Directors' election resolution as presented.
Motion.
Second.
Discussion? Okay, we have a motion and a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it. Next up, we need a motion to approve the November two thousand twenty-two personnel recommendations as, or sorry, and resignations as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? We have a motion and a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Abstain.
And one abstain. All right, with that.
Yeah, I was going to do this when we adjourn, um there was someone that was going to speak and open that didn't get a chance to, and the topic was around, so it's not on the agenda, but I recognize we were extending speaker, and Danielle, you do a good job of following up with people that speak and or send emails, they wanted to speak on locker usage throughout middle school and high school, we, I mean, we all read social media, it's a question that gets there, I think with the season changing and the coats and the, you know, indoor basketball and other things going on, there's just a question about what are, what really is our stance there, it's not a policy per se, but what is our stance, and how does it apply to middle schools and high schools, and I don't really have a directive here, but maybe it's just a follow-up on what kind of the district stance is, so it's clear, and one place that either if we're asked or others are asking, we can find it, and it's just the, the ask there.
And so there's not necessarily a district policy on locker usage, what we do know is over time, students typically have not used lockers as we did when we were back, when we were in school. Our biggest question that has come up this year has been around middle school locker usage, particularly with uh sixth-grade students, and so all of the middle schools have basically said, we're not assigning lockers, however, if there is an issue, if there is a reason, then parents can make a request to the school administration, and they're working through that process, and they're granting those lockers. So if there's our, you know, usually if students are in band, there's usually a band locker that they have access to, to lock away their, their um instruments, but now that we're getting into winter, if it's too much with coats and backpacks and things like that, um if individuals do want a locker, then that's something that they can certainly request.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, with that, we need a motion to adjourn open session and go into closed session for the purpose of personnel.
Motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Eyes have it.